Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. The protocols have been established. I don't intend to recognize persons who have been recognized previously, but if we mess up me if I didn't recognize the presence of Mr. William Hines and Ms. Keisha Reed, the Chief Technical Officer and within the Division of Energy and the Project Manager for the Public Sector Smart Fund and the now closed Smart Energy Fund, and also Mr. Roger Blackman, CEO of the Barbados Light and Power. And I wish to recognize them because they're two critical partners to some of the key components that we're going to discuss here this morning. And I think Jerry just spread my presentation as a featured address. It's not going to be a featured address. I mainly just be opening the doors to some of the issues that we want you to really engage on today. And all of them hang around the whole question of how can we effectively unlock financing within the renewable energy sector? Credit to government, credit to the Barbados Light and Power. They have been working collectively and independently over the last seven to eight years in trying to get to the point where we can even have a discussion of talking about renewable energy or even providing a genesis for an organization which I represent here, the Barbados Renewable Energy Association. The history is well documented that the Barbados Light and Power really created the framework in which persons can even contemplate making investments and being interconnected to the grid with respect to renewable energy on island. Government, through various agencies in their trading commission and the Energy Division, have sought in partnership to foster that relationship and development. So we would have seen the evolution of programs such as the Renewable Energy Rader in its various forms over the last seven years, culminating to the passage of the Electric Light and Power Act in 2013, the issuance of the regulations for that act in 2015, and the various Fair Trading Commission decisions that would have culminated in us last July having what we can consider to be the semblance of the first fixed rate feeding tariff. I give that background just to give you a context of where we've evolved. What we've been struggling with right now, now that we have a lot more clarity in terms of the licensing, the regulatory regime, and the potential for some sort of economic activity, is a question of how can we get the financial markets and the financing sector to really respond and really provide the real engine to this vehicle that we've been doing so much bodywork on for the last eight years? We need to get this sector moving and finance, as they say, drives the horse. So what have been some of the issues that we've been looking at? As I said, we wouldn't have received the first real semblance of a feeding tariff last July, but there are some concerns that the sector has raised in relation to that. Based on some of our preliminary discussions with some finance houses, what are the challenges persons have been facing, given the level of the tariff, particularly on the photovoltaic side? Because that's where a lot of the interest is, particularly for systems under 500 kilowatts, is how can you make a viable business case for securing financing? Some of the discussions we've had would ascend around the fact that there were concerns over the securitization of the systems and also in terms of securing financing, the duration of the loans being offered. And what some of the preliminary numbers have shown us, based on the fact that the minister through the Electric Light and Power Advisory Committee has only been issuing licenses for 10-year periods. Most of the financing houses said they weren't prepared to offer loans for durations beyond seven years. This is some of the feedback that we have received. If there are any financial institutions represented here that have slightly different positions, today really represents the form where we can expect some engagement from you on this. But what that limitation in terms of the loan period has meant is that when you marry the loan period of seven years against the tariff currently being offered, it means that most investments that secure financing, maybe to the tune of between 70% to 100%, are in a negative return for the first seven years of the duration of that loan period. In other words, you're basically earning enough on the tariff if you strictly pursue an investment to sell power back to the grid exclusively. Most of your profits generated or the income generated would be going back into service in the loan. Some of our members over the last two years have been evaluating what circumstances could best alleviate this situation, given the reality of range as to where the current rate of 41 cents roughly for photovoltaic systems on the 500 kilowatts is located, is that? If we were to have a licensing period extended from 10 years to 20 years, which is technically feasible because most photovoltaic systems are expected once they're properly designed and they're right equipment sourced to last roughly 20 to 25 years. If you were to extend the licensing period, this is true to Minister, to 20 years, it would give the financial houses a bit more leverage in terms of extending the amortization period for these systems from maybe seven years to maybe 12 or 15 years. Given these numbers with where the tariff currently is, you would be in a positive cash flow position from inception. Some estimates based on installers show that you'd be able to garner between 30% to as much as 40% of the income generated on top of paying the loan financing for the duration of the extended loan period. One of the things that we're looking at this morning and we've been in discussion, and I just want to let you know that this particular issue was not precipitated by the recent budgetary proposals. We have had formal meetings and discussions with the Minister of Energy and this regard and the senior staff within the Division of Energy on making a case for really looking at expanding this licensing period from 10 years to 20 years. So this is one of the issues that we want to engage you on further today. Because we see this as critical to unlocking the financing. And as I said, this issue predated the recent budgetary proposals. So I'll have to contextualize the implications that the recent budget may have even on these proposals. Another issue which has not had much public discussion, but it is an issue that we know is very naive in very specific quarters with parties concerned. And it has to do with the implications surrounding the issuance of long-term independent power producer licenses arising under the Electric Light and Power Act, given the fact that the current utility, as described in law, is the Barbados Light and Power company. Given the fact that their franchise or license will expire in just over 12 years' time, in 2028. It raises a subtle question as to the position that the minister would have for issuing long-term licenses, maybe within this year, the next year, once that aspect of the Electric Light and Power Act is being initiated beyond that 2028 period. Straight analysis that we've done internally in Brea, looking at the Electric Light and Power Act, it speaks to utility. It doesn't specifically identify who the utility is. But the presupposition is that a utility would be in existence and in place to provide electric services to the country beyond 2028. The question is who that utility would be? What that has on a very specific, the implications arising from that on very specific circumstances. If an investor were to secure an IPP license for, say, a solar farm, a wind farm, or any major investment, and in accordance with a strict interpretation of the law, they were to approach the utility and say, "We would like a power purchase agreement to match the duration of our license or to match the duration of our investment." Because a wind farm or solar farm, as I indicated, can brand new for about 20 years. Would the Barbados Light and Power be in a position legally? And they have one of their senior legal representatives here. And I'm just tossing these issues out so you can reflect on them if you want to comment during the discussion. But it raises the question as to whether the Barbados Light and Power, given that their license has not been extended to 28, can legally enter into a power purchase agreement with that IPP licensee beyond 2028? I raise this issue because this is an issue that we need to validate publicly. And as I said, these are issues that do not really touch and concern the public, but they are real issues for persons who are seriously considering investing. And they're real issues for the utility that's perfectly providing the service here for us. So I thought that we need to put that in the openness part of our discussion today. The other issue that we want to look at as well, and this is where it touches and concerns, the first issue of the 10-year license extension to 20 years, is the implication that the recent increase in tariffs, which we understand has been imposed on the photovoltaic sector for installers who are important components who have to source components of which almost 70% are imported inputs in terms of your panels, your wiring, your cabling, your inverters. What implication that would have on the tariff that the FTC would have introduced last July? Now, we recognize that the government is currently engaged in an active consultancy of a writing and a comprehensive tariff study for the renewable energy sector going forward. And the language of the fair trading decision from last July does feature being a temporary tariff. But given the fact, if Brea doesn't succeed in convincing the Ministry of Finance within the next two weeks for there to be some exemption from the imposition of the increasing in national sustainable social responsibility levy, it would have implications for the tariff that is currently in place in that that tariff was predicated on what was considered by the FTC company the established benchmark or floor or resource cost for installing the various technologies. The imposition of the budget proposal means that there's somewhat of a market distortion in relation to the parameters on which that decision and that tariff was arrived at. And the basic question as to whether there would be some consideration if you did not succeed in there being an exemption for the sector for some revisiting of the tariff that has been awarded last July. And that revisiting I'm specifically meaning an upward increase in the tariff rate because your costs have gone up. So the basis on which persons would have arrived and calculated what was a reasonable cost offering a reasonable rate of return have now been changed with the pending budgetary proposals. Apart from pushing for a carve-out for the sector, specifically in terms of looking at the indications for persons looking at renewable energy investment, we also represent other stakeholders. There's Mr. Jordan here representing the solar water heater industry and Ms. Jim Reed. They are also infected in their actual business because they have to rely on imported inputs in their manufacturing components. And I think they can speak in a bit more detail as to some of the specific issues. And I know they will speak on some of those issues. But there's a concern in terms of looking at the sector from that perspective. And as Mr. Bino just indicated, energy efficiency is still the lowest hanging fruit. And I have to say specifically, the reason why energy efficiency is seen as the lowest hanging fruit because one of the fortunate sectors in this economy which has received from inception an exemption from the national social responsibility levy is the tourism sector. And that very sector can significantly improve their energy efficiency and their energy consumption by investing in some of the very energy efficient technologies that will now be affected. Lighting, air conditioning, solar water heating for hot water that they require. Most of the local manufacturers who can assist in benefiting that very sector that received the exemption are now disqualified from receiving those exemptions themselves. So these are some of the issues that we've had when we look at the expanse of some of the implications for this renewable energy sector from the recent budgetary proposals. And we would want to really engage on some discussion today and come up with some concrete solutions going forward. Another issue that we wish to introduce today at this forum, which again has not had much public discourse, is the stark reality that government faces a catch-22 situation with respect to the energy sector. A lot of people are not aware of the fact, or they ought to be aware of the fact because the recent budgets has emphasized its importance. This is the fact that government accounts for close to 20% of its revenue from the fossil fuel sector. And given that fact, it's almost a sense of fear or trepidation in looking to push aggressively towards the integration of renewable and sustainable energy technologies. VAT collected on utility bills, where the fuel component accounts for almost 70% of electricity costs. If you look to push straight ahead, although you still manage to gain VAT returns from the compensation and credit that would go to renewable energy suppliers. Some projections that I've seen from some of the technocrats and Anderson Energy Division, and one of them is now entering the room here, Mr. Brian. Sorry to put you on the spot, Brian, but you're right with this technique. What is statistics indicate is that as government displaces the fossil fuel component in our energy mix, there's almost going to be a concomitant reduction in revenue take. And a lot of economists, and I am no economist, have now started to look deeply at these issues and see how can we create a sustainable transition strategy in terms of our fiscal policy. So one of the issues that we want to discuss today is trying to see how best we can explore some of the fiscal implications that would arise from government transitioning away from its dependence on fossil fuel towards more sustainable energy technologies. We at Brea believe that until we engage in this serious fiscal discussion, the alternative energy sector will go nowhere. Because we're currently faced with a serious fiscal crisis in this country. And when you look at 20% of government's fiscal revenue, the last the budgets have identified increases in the SaaS to either pay the debt to the QBH, to either help offsetting other aspects of government's fiscal deficit. So the increase in the SaaS on diesel and gasoline, this speaks to the crisis. And this is one of the biggest barriers to significant progress in terms of advancing the renewable energy sector. And I'm not sure if any representatives are here from the Ministry of Finance, but this is a discussion we really would like to engage with you on. Because we believe that there are holistic solutions. And I'll deal with some of those solutions a little later as we explore the discussion. So what are some of the key outputs we're looking at today for you to reflect on? It is firstly for us to seek to present a formal case for the extension of the licensing period from a 10-year to a 20-year period. And this discussion would really require us to look at some of the legal issues that I would have discussed vis a vis utilities, license extension, and the issues in terms of the powers of the minister to actually set the actual duration of the license. Because if you read a strict interpretation, Light and Power can issue a power purchase agreement, but you can only sell power if you have a valid license under the grid. So if Light and Power were to care, even if their license was extended to 20 years, they wanted to give you a 20-year PPA. Really, if you only have a 10-year license, after 10 years, you'd be breaking the law if you tried that here to determine their power purchase agreement. So these issues, although they seem somewhat modular, they offer clarity to the business community. And we see some of the bankers here who can look at these issues and see the gray areas and say, "But this is not clear." So these are just some minor issues, but it all speaks somehow best we can add clarity to facilitating the investment plan in the sector. So this is an issue that we would be seeking to discuss more formally. As I said, the utilities license, there ought to be some discussion on that because it's obvious that beyond 2028, all of us would intend to continue burning our license and using our power. We probably have more advanced devices by then. There may be a few more electric vehicles. So depending on certainty about what's going to happen with utilities license, we feel as an energy association and given the vision and the forerightness that the Barbados Light and Power, particularly through experience, companies, the mirror is demonstrated. Because they must receive credit as one of the few utilities in the globe who have recognized the clear and pursued business case in pursuing sustainable energy investment. And credit has to go to us. And we are fortunate in Barbados to have a utility that is soul-minded. So this is an issue that we at Brea think we need to advance. There is a question as well as engagement, further and deeper engagement with financial stakeholders surrounding the whole issue of the licensing period. And when we talk about financial institutions, we talk about the commercial banks, we talk about the non-banking sectors such as the credit unions as well. I think I was just reading as recent as Tuesday in newspaper, one of the largest credit unions here was reporting that, I think in 2016 alone, they recorded an increase of almost $93 million in deposits. They have assets well over a billion dollars. Why we need to unlock some of this investment is simply this. Every Barbadian dollar that is invested in renewable energy generation displaces the need for imported fossil fuels. We don't have much oil here. We have to pay somebody else for it. If we can naturally displace as much as our dependence on fossil fuel with local capital investment, that is going to create and increase domestic economic activity. Because after you pay back your financing charges or your loans, you cover the costs of foreign exchange that you would have to expend initially as a capital expense to import the equipment, all of the income generated in selling power back to the utility on various places will remain here to develop the economy. And unfortunately, this is one of the things that we've been so critical of the budget about because we've been speaking to these things. We're not looking for incentives. We're looking for facilitation and trying to advance the sector to create a domestic situation. And not asking any of the bankers here to disclose any confidential information if we reflect on this. But I've been doing some anecdotal thinking. When I look at the fact that figures say there's over a few billion dollars sitting in the commercial banks in deposits, I don't think all of it belongs to one person. So I started to speculate and say, "There have to be at least a good 10,000 to 15,000 people that have deposits in excess of $250,000 in banks." What is happening with that capital? We know the interest rates being offered aren't the most extended. And there are good business reasons for that from the commercial banks. But how can we convince those 15,000, 20,000 persons to take up some of that money and invest in this sector? Right? This is a simple message that we need. You know, there's always a mistake that everyone is looking for quick fixes and by looking for incentives. The reality is that Barbados is in deep hole. But if we concern ourselves and jump, it might be a road that we can fall onto and start climbing up. But it's going to take time to get up. But we have to create the rope. And this sector is one of the potential ropes for us to climb up to that hole. There's no quick fixes. But we believe that this sector, and we continue to advocate that this sector is one of the last opportunities and in fact, the greatest opportunity for domestic wealth creation in this country since emancipation. And we need to really pursue it. And this dialogue today is really to try and foster greater interaction, greater engagement to advance that cause. Because we can see it. But we recognize that a lot of the financial institutions are still understandably uncertain. Because there has been uncertainty. And I alluded to that when it documented the fact that a lot of the components have recently come into being, such as the feeding tariff, which is still, quote unquote, termed as temporary. A lot of this obviously would provide some doubting in minor financial institutions. And that's where we need a sense of urgency in terms of progressing the discussion and the actual framework for there to be clearly documented means to which we can make investments. So an adjustment to the minimum feeding tariff, we know that is a work in progress. There's a consultant who is well advanced in terms of having the comprehensive study. And that study would also engage. Brea has been fortunate through being a representative of the National Sustainable Energy Task Force to be part to that, privy to those discussions. The Energy Division and the Fair Trading Commission are engaged in that process in terms of assessing the work that the consultant who's dealing with the feeding tariff structure study is currently engaged in. And we're hopeful that sometime during the course of the year, a lot more tariff would be able to be offered to the public and the financial institutions and potential investors, those 15,000 at least persons with nice bank accounts, that I believe who would be interested in really pursuing some of these investments. On the front with respect to the National Social Responsibility Levy and the 2% Commission on Foreign Exchange Transactions, we are in the process of fine-tuning the letter, making a case and addressing some of these issues that we'll deal today and some of your feedback. That's where we deny the submission of our letter because we want to incorporate some specific concerns that some of you have into that correspondence that will be going off on Monday to the Minister of Finance. She should not be in the room because I'm saying Monday. But it would be heavily dependent on her in terms of the actual delivery. But most certainly, within the first half of next week, that correspondence will grow with your views and some of these concerns. As I said, there is a lot more work for in-depth research to be done with respect to the fiscal implications arriving from pursuing the alternative energy sector. And just to speak on this a bit more. And I'm not going to fear the kicking on the hotel sector because there's well-documented data dating back almost over eight, nine years on the challenges the sector faces. The hotel sector conducted a study in early 2009 that identified utilities as their most burdensome input. It ranked above food and beverage, purchases, taxes, licenses, insurance, which they identified utilities of which electricity was a major concern and water to another extent was their most burdensome input. There was a study that was funded by the IATV in addition to several other partners, GIA said, the Caribbean Hotel Energy Network Task Force, checking the study that identified that the Barbadian sector, and specifically there was some walkthrough audit done in terms of energy consumption, water conservation practices and stuff for the Barbadian hotel sector. And that study reported that 60% of the energy used, electricity used by that sector was attributable to their electricity and air conditioning costs. And that by simply making the necessary retrofits by using more efficient lighting, LED lighting, energy efficient air conditioning such as the DC inverter, air conditioning units, could actually achieve a 60% reduction in their overall energy consumption as a sector. Some hotels have actually sought on their own volition to make initiatives to make themselves more energy efficient. There are a few of those hotels that have done that. But by and large, a lot of the results from that study have not been added upon. In 2011, 2012, the cost of addressing those challenges was immunerated at approximately $20 million. I think it was a ridiculous payback for you well below, I think, two years in terms of on the lighting and the savings that you would see in terms of the return on the investment across the board. $20 million US, 2011, 2012. It is no secret that the hotel sector pays half of the effective upgrade in this country and is done suffering excess of about six or seven years. We are in a fiscal crisis. As recent as the interim draft of the National Sustainable Energy Policy, the consultant tasked with preparing that draft identified that the Barbadian hotel sector, which is just in excess of 100 hotels, at best maybe 120 customers out of the Barbados Light and Power's 26,000 customer base, accounts for 15% of the island's national electricity consumption. I would stand to be corrected by Mr. Blackman here. He would know the figures. But 15%, if you had to look at the aggregate... But fifteen percent, if you had to look at the aggregate percentage of our fuel import bill for electricity generation, what that translated to. I'm sure even without low oil prices now, it probably would be in excess of ten, maybe fifteen million. Roger, I stand corrected if that figure is there. But what I'm trying to get at with this, we are in a fiscal crisis. Twenty million dollars back in twenty eleven. Even if the government had to say, let us make the investment with the hoteliers or come up with some creative structure to finance that retrofit, we can save the country in two ways. One, we will save on the foreign exchange we had to find to import all from twenty eleven till now. What it would have created is a situation for government is to make a reasonable case, and I'm not speaking on behalf of the Minister of Tourism, the Minister of Energy or the Minister of Finance. It would have made a reasonable, understandable case to the sector in a fiscal crisis that all of us need to exercise national social responsibility. That's the hotel sector to pay a bit more than VAT rate. I'm no economist, but I put that issue on the table because we're in a crisis and we need to be brutally honest with the circumstances. All of us have been asked to sacrifice. So I leave the hotel sector alone. If we look at the transportation sector, there's been lots of discussion about the potential benefits that electrified transportation and hybrid vehicles can offer to the country. Yes, there has been some reduction in the duties with respect to electric and hybrid vehicles. But if you're a dissector, you know that an EV and a hybrid costs a hell of a lot more once it leaves the factory gate than a regular combustion vehicle. So if a combustion vehicle faces a duty tariff fee of a hundred percent, but it only costs seven thousand US dollars to leave the factory gate, an EV would cost about thirty-five thousand or twenty-five thousand US dollars to leave the factory gate, but it faces maybe a fifty-five cumulative duty rate. If you're quick with maths and you do the numbers, the duty rate on the EV is still higher. And although the actual duty figure seems lower, in reality, there's still a differential in favor of the combustion vehicle when you compare the costs. Again, I'm not the economist. We're in a fiscal crisis. That's an issue for the technocrats to discuss. But let us be honest. Zero rating electric vehicles or hybrid vehicles in this market is not going to affect the potential benefits of the imposition or increase of assess on diesel and gasoline. Barbados has an excess of a hundred and fourteen thousand vehicles. You will still collect revenue off of the hundred and fourteen thousand vehicles. Even if you were to say you're going to zero rate for five years and fifty thousand EVs come in, you're still going to collect a lot of revenue. So that argument to me is another argument. But again, I stand corrected by the professionals who are economists. These are the issues we need to talk about and investigate. Give me the hard data, cloud it in your professional opinion, and I can advocate on it. But the point being is this. Mr. Bino just indicated that Barbados has committed itself to certain reductions in terms of its fossil fuel commitment. And the government has confirmed that by twenty thirty, we are to be consuming at least two-thirds less volume of fuel than we currently consume. Electric vehicles, besides being more efficient in terms of you saving almost six percent on your operating costs in comparison to combustion vehicles. And Mr. Blackman can speak to this a little later. Sorry for putting you on the spot, but these are issues that I know I dare to you and the company. EVs offer the opportunity to advance the expansion of the island's renewable energy sector, particularly intermittent wind and solar, because the battery capacity that these vehicles have had could offer storage support to the grid. So there's a dual benefit to this. And there's a specific question. And it has to do with the status of the Barbados Transport Board. We and Brea believe, and we're currently engaged in discussion with government on pursuing the exploration of a detailed pilot study exploring the possibility of converting the island's public transportation bus fleet, including the PSVs and the transport board over to electrified vehicles. To me, as well, to issues, one, improve the efficiency of the sector because there's a lot of energy that is consumed running the transport board, often in terms of fuel and ZR buses. And two, to offer the potential effect, allowing us to expand our intermittent, particularly renewable energy integration. Because of the battery capacity, this volume of buses would offer to the island's grid in terms of support. PFP installers, and this speaks to the fiscal aspects of this as well. PSP installers have indicated that on average, they expend between twenty-five and thirty thousand dollars annually in diesel. This is around the average ZR. There would be some fluctuation depending on roof length and everything, but this is the average that we had from their major representatives. A conversion to an electric van, although the capital cost is going to be initially higher, you're going to be saving almost twenty thousand dollars on your fuel expenses alone. Not even to include your operating and maintenance costs, which should be lower. No transmission of fuel, no oil or anything. You'll be saving at least twenty thousand dollars annually on your operating costs in this vehicle. Our argument to government is again, this creates another fiscal opportunity for you. If you can facilitate the speedy retrofit and offer these savings on fuel alone, it opens the door for you to explore as a reasonable government, appealing to everybody's national social responsibility to get it out of this crisis to say, look, some of that twenty thousand saving on fuel, we might need a bit more of that in terms of revenue. That's a reasonable argument. But again, these are some of the issues that we thought and would hope and would have liked to see discussed in the budget and acted upon. So when we've made our criticism of the budget publicly, these are some of the issues that we've been advocating for behind the scenes related to serious examination of. There are clear solutions for us to get up. There may not be solutions that's going to make the sun turn up at midnight. But there are solutions in terms of a forward trajectory that the government has signaled and probably set a staple, a top signal that we want to move towards. So in a nutshell, these are some of the issues that I've tossed out, I've said quite a bit. But these are some of the real hard issues that we need to start addressing in naturally when we look at the expansion of the sector, the expansion of the sector, and what are some of the potential alternatives we have in terms of addressing the fiscal crisis. So thank you.